I don't really know where you're gonna sit, so I think I'll just move this over here for you. Because you're really quiet.
It's what the same value.
Morning, Jason.
Great.
No, it was ready.
Okay. Yeah. Everybody please stand. We'll say a pledge of prayer. Rick?
That's right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undegowed, indivisible, in justice.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for these many blessings you bestowed upon us. Dear Lord God, watch over us. Grant us patience and wisdom as we go about the work of this great county, the state, and this nation. Lord God, bless those who serve and protect us. In this precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. I sound like a talker now. You want to switch chairs?
No.
Stand up. Raise.
I'll be probably loose wack. Have you guys had a chance to... There is minutes, claims.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve.
Rick made a motion.
Second.
Todd, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Barbara? There he is, morning.
Morning, mother.
I'm here on two different wires. The first is, as you're aware, Washington County Community Corrections has now completed their second year of operation, and I attached in your paperwork that Congress sent you an annual report that was distributed to our advisory board of our numbers for 2023. Do you have any questions about anything on there?
Ready.
Grants for 2025 have now been opened up. I know we just started 2024, but there seemed to be an hurry to get 2025 going. In the past, I've been able to count on the commissioner's support for that grant, and so I came today to ask if I can continue to have that support in writing the 2025 grants for community corrections.
So I need a motion on the 25th, 24th?
Right.
25th?
So moved.
Rick made a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you. The other man around here for, as you're aware, the J-Rad Board is doing opioid dispersment money. We received an application from the Washington County Emergency Management for a vascular drill and supplies. It would be a one-time purchase, and they would, the way they talked at our J-Rad Board, the piece of equipment would last for about five years. We asked about, because it has had needles with it, and they said they were going to purchase so many needles using the opioid dispersment money, and then the rest of the needles they needed as they went along, they would try to get approval through the council through their medical supplies.
What was it? What was the cost on that?
$12,594.77. And they are requesting that to all come out of the opioid restricted funds. My understanding is, according to what they put on the application, they are to use it for one suffering and overdose whose veins are so damaged that they cannot take an IV without having their vascular system drilled, and so this machine would allow that drilling to happen. And according to what they told us at the J-Rad Board, that actually puts the needles right into the bone. This drill would do that. So it was asked by one of the J-Rad Board members if that machine would have to be charged or anything like that. They said no, it would not, that it should always be ready to use, and they would make sure they kept up with the maintenance on it during that time.
So is it machine certified then?
Yes, they said it was, yes.
So it's inspected, what have you?
Yes.
Okay.
And really, the only thing they're out is the needles after they run out of the first batch, because they're not reusable, they have to.
Great. That was what they told us, yes. And so we asked that, because I think they only, they put supplies, and I think we called them, and they said there's like 18 needles is all nearby with it. They're like different sized needles. And so we asked, you know, are you gonna come back and ask for more money? And Tony Floyd said, no, they weren't expecting to, that they were hoping they could just budget that into their medical supplies each year on their accounting budget.
So I need a motion to go ahead and purchase.
They already have.
Are you sorry, boy?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Right, second.
So Rick's made a motion, Todd, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mary.
Hey, excuse me, I have a question. You're aware of this juvenile detention center that was closed down in Knox County. Do you get any rumblings, do you hear anything from the state about what their solution is supposed to be?
So at this point, the detention center is still open until March 29th, and so the lady down there is very concerned, because once the letter went out stating they were closing, nobody was sending their kids down there. So we will continue to use them through March 29th. The state's policy has been, and they continue to work on, taking care of kids more in the home setting, not putting them in detention type scenarios, and that works in some cases, but in some cases, it does not. And we have tried, as juvenile officers here in Washington County, to change our policy, to gear more towards, if it's something we can deal with in the home, we try to do that, or using, like Willstone Mental Health, something like that, or outpatient counseling. But there are, as you're aware, instances where you have to pull that kid out, you have to get him locked away, otherwise the crime continues to happen. Those are the ones we're concerned about, what we are going to do. I had heard about one county that had a jail that they had, they had built a brand new jail, and so I have spoken with prosecutor's office and told her to make contact over there and see, because I know there was some rumblings about maybe making a detention center there, but I had not heard whether they have decided what they're doing with that building, which it would not be that far away, and it would be a good resource for a lot of counties. And as I talked to the lady at Southwest, she said, which I told her, I said, we're not the only county, and she said, no, she said, there are a lot of counties. She said, they're gonna be getting kids from Green County into Southwest, which is Big Sands area, just because all of your detention centers around the Indianapolis area are full. We use Johnson County for one. Now you call her, and she's like, I can hold them for 24 hours, but then you have to get them out. I don't have beds. She has them sleeping in the floor sometimes, because she just don't have the numbers. I don't know what we're gonna do. I know there's been talk with the judges about maybe trying to put something at the jail to do that, but I know in conversation with the sheriff, that is not, he's not willing to do that.
Well, the state won't let you do it, then, which you house juveniles, you know, with the age.
Yeah, yeah. The idea was to block off maybe one corner where they were segregated, because you can do it as long as they're segregated and have no contact with the adults, but like I said, at this point, that's not gonna work.
Do you know how many juveniles that we've been taking up to detention center, having to truck wherever?
I do not have a count. Of course, it varies. A lot of it depends on what the kid's offense is, how many times they've been in trouble, as far as how long they're sitting there. Sometimes it depends on, if we're trying to get a kid into residential placement, that takes a little bit of time. We can't just move them straight from detention into the residential. The state has put qualifications on us that we have to do before we can make that step. If they're being sent to Department of Corrections as a juvenile, that also takes time for us to process. You have to go through all the court proceedings, and of course, it doesn't happen in one or two hearings. It's stretched out over time. So to say the exact number, I have no idea, and every year would be a different number, just because crime's different every year. We don't know.
So you said Knox County will close March?
March 29th is the last day.
Can I ask you what your plan is after March?
We don't have it yet. We have talked to the judges, I've talked to the prosecutor's office, everyone is aware of the situation. We actually ran into this scenario before, when Johnson County filled out, and Southwest was closing the residential, but they agreed to keep the detention center, and then they sent out a notice, and so they were actually going to expand the detention center. So we were, because there's been a time or two where they've been full, but we couldn't house any kids there. But for the most part, they have been able to house whenever we needed them. But this is the first time we've actually come up to a wall where we have no, no plan, no, nothing in the works. I don't know what.
Well, my understanding, they presented it to some of the different counties for purchase. It run much of trouble with that. It's gonna be labor.
Yeah, my understanding, yeah, my understanding talking to her is the finances. That's why it's closing, is because of the finance. She said she thought that when they took close the residential side, that they could continue to finance it to keep open the detention side, but she said they're not able. She said there's eighty acres there on that piece of property, which is a lot of acreage to keep up with. So I...
I see a problem, government.
I, it's gonna, it makes me, yeah, it makes me nervous, I'll just tell you, when you have to tell, and I've been in this situation, when you have to tell a parent whose kid's beating him up in the home, I'm sorry, you're asking your kid in the house, because I don't have no place to put him. I've had to do that before, and it is not fun at all.
Is nobody, it's a state concern?
They, the push of the state is to close detention centers, but that causes more issues. They would prefer more community-based. We're a rule. We don't have counseling facilities and mental health facilities just sitting here waiting for our kids to go there. We don't have that. So, yeah, like I said, it's gonna, it's gonna be kind of crisis if something doesn't go well soon, as far as where we can put these kids.
And that's a trouble for me, that's, you look at the cost of what we are right now. I have to transport to Knox, and then back, and then back, and back, and you're, you're out officers to do that with anyway, and...
Yeah. Knox County's been really good. That was another push. They was the most expensive detention center, but number one, it's the only detention center that had beds, and number two, they provided transportation most of the time to port back. So once our officer took them to the facility, they provided the transportation to port back. Our officers very rarely had to do that, which made very good high marks with the sheriff, because then he's not trying to pull somebody out of the jail or off the road to run the kids down there to get them up here to port and take them back. So that was another draw for Knox County that none of the other detention centers have. They don't like it.
Hate to say it, but I think I'm gonna see you back probably sooner, we think, with the problem.
Yeah, and that's very possible. That's what's gonna happen, and we said, I know, I've put out, I've put out my conversations to both the judges and the prosecutor, and we're all at odds. Nobody seems to have an idea. So, yeah, I don't know. I really don't know what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Thanks. I do have a letter that you can sign and give to Kyra, just for that support of that grant.
All right. You want this?
No, you can have it.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Can I see Mr. Cottongin come in?
Yes, sir.
You wanna come forward, Terry? I know you don't want to, but come forward. Your chairs aren't very comfortable out there.
Well, man, Mr. Jesse made here, but he should be appearing anytime. But, uh, let me give you some pictures of seeing of the crime. Uh, I guess part of the issue here is me. I didn't realize we had a setback issue in the county, and so, uh, you know, I'm looking at a state permit, of course, the state says you can be on the property line, go build farm walls, uh, but you guys have got one that's, I guess, a 60-foot setback. Maybe the highway people are the ones that are pushing this, and I can understand it in a lot of places. The issues here were, I couldn't crowd the back building, because the back building is over four foot each, and if we got any closer than what I am, we had to sprinkle the thing, and there's not that kind of water out there. I think we're 38 feet off the center line over to the structure, and the area's basically a 40-foot square. Either that's porch in, uh, totally about, about 40-foot square. So as you can see by the jazz picture, we're on a straight stretch of road. That area all out there will be a yard. All the drive, the parking, and everything will be behind the building. So I know you guys are the ones that are grandparents, but anyway, I guess I wanted to come and show you this, and let you see what we've got there, and, uh, I won't say the reasons for my madness. I guess it was just ignorance. I've been doing this for 50 years, and I hadn't heard this rule.
Terry, excuse me, I'm at, that's what you said. What is the black square out in front of the building?
Well, that's the building. That's the square. If you go to the second page.
Okay, so that's what, that's what the difference is at.
Where the building is on the picture, but not good enough to draw up like you're supposed to.
But there will be absolutely no parking or anything on the front side.
No.
And I see where that porch is on the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Terry, this 60-foot setback, it was established back in 2003, and it all came about because, maybe I told you, an incident where one of the county highway disc mowers was, was mowing along a road, and disc mower blade flew off, went through a house, cut the washing machine, water lines. People weren't home, flooded the house, so I'm not gonna say it was a knee-jerk reaction, but it did put a little fear, because, because of lawsuits, and there was a lawsuit in that case, so that's when the former commissioners back in 2003 made this 60-foot setback. Myself and the other plan commission and the VCA members, we've been struggling with this somewhat, and Travis Elliott, the plan commission director, we want to have rules and laws that make sense. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Every situation's different, but, but the main point is, as long as there's no parking, in my opinion, in between the road and the building, say it is 60 feet, if there was parking there, the time you put a vehicle there that's, you know, 20 feet long, then you get inching closer and closer to the county road. So in your case, that's not even an issue. You're not even gonna be parking between the building and the road, and I wish we could wave a magic wand and say, yeah, Terry, go ahead, but we have to go through by law the proper procedure, and you're gonna have, you know, go through that bareness process, and I think you pretty much got that completed, just a matter of showing up for, uh, March 5th meeting. But, but I went out there, and I looked at this, and another, uh, plan commission member looked at it, and I mean, there, I don't see a problem with it, but, you know, unfortunately, we have rules that don't make sense sometimes.
And they're making more every day.
I've heard that.
Heard that. So I appreciate you coming forward and bringing this to life, as if it is, it is a problem, because, you know, let's not kid ourselves, we've got hundreds, if not thousands, of old buildings who are, they're grandfathered, some of them 10 feet off the road, you know, been there for 100 years, but then we go and make new rules, and people don't understand why, so, uh, our, our big concern's public safety and, uh, and trying to stay out of lawsuits. But once again, I certainly don't have a problem with where it's at.
Okay.
You, you didn't, you didn't have any choice anyway, because that big building, you didn't want to put it any closer than you had to, so, and it's a nice building, too.
Yep. So Jesse said, he says, some of the neighbors are mad at me because I'm gonna have a better office, and they got a house.
That's fact, yeah. Fact.
Okay. Subject number two. The bleachers. We're starting to tear things apart. Big deal is, is I ain't gonna see aluminum planks till the first of May. If I've got everything else done, I don't think there's gonna be an issue with getting all the planks down, but I guess, you know, I'm betting on other people to get the material, which this aluminum has been quite a battle. I thought I'd be able to get through some of the steel post trailers. Well, that didn't really work. They had some things, apparently these aluminum planks are kind of an extrusion per bleacher kind of. And of course, I've got all my documents from the first time around, but they've just got me surrounded, so I didn't have any luck matching exactly what's there. But we have, we've been up there the last couple days, getting stuff, and we're out, we're about ready. Take that beam out there, get it back, get it, yeah. And then our favorite subject, a tower, outside a tower. I think I'm about to get my little brother inspired to get there. The one they know that he won't touch and I don't wanna touch is the one to the north. That is on somebody else's property, and that cog came out there, and the Amish owned it at that time. I guess them and the Amish decided that it was not a big deal, so they put it there. Well, the fence has been built kind of around the thing, so it makes it look like it's really with the rest of property, parking, parking is really out. So somebody needs to maybe go talk to him and get his blessing to let us get that.
My understanding was he didn't want his tree cut.
That's our plan issue.
So if he doesn't want his tree cut, then I guess we're going to have to have April write the letter.
Let April talk.
We can let April talk.
Can you explain?
Sure, my share.
Yeah.
Okay. So if there's a tree on somebody's property, for the most part, that property owner's responsible for that tree. If it falls and causes damage on somebody else's property, the property owner is still responsible. There's, we can always reach out to a property owner to ask them for permission to remove that tree, or ask them to remove that tree, but legally, we can't force them to do that.
So we go to contract. Who does that? Is it Mr. Cottongin, or is it us?
With respect to that radio tower?
Yeah, the original contract.
So in that situation, the property owner where the easement is located is still responsible for that tree?
That'd be Mr. Cottongin.
Correct.
Okay. So is there... Have you talked to the neighbor, Terry?
No, I think my little brother has, but I haven't.
Is he okay with Cotton?
Uh, from what I was hearing, he wasn't.
Our problem is, we've had enough claims the way it is, and if that tree was to fall, who knows whether it is or not. If the tree was to fall, tear it up and knock 911 out, we know there's gonna be a lot of lawsuits.
Yeah.
And our insurance agents don't want us to have no more lawsuits.
But did you not, did you not say that...
So that property owner's going to be, for the most part. I mean, there are some exceptions, you know, there's, and you're probably, you could probably correct them depending on our policy, on our insurance, but for the most part, in Indiana, it's the property owner's responsibility, so that property owner's going to be responsible if they've not kept up on that tree. So if this is a tree that is negligent in not keeping up on it, and it causes harm, then, you know, that's, that's a situation where that property owner may be responsible. But if it falls on our property, and it's, they have no reason to believe that there was something wrong with that tree, that's a different situation. But my understanding is that that tree is dead, and it's causing a...
It's a, it's a nice, awkward tree. When it goes up, it's got a why to it. That's it, force that, but it's, it's a nice tree, uh, depending which way the wind blew, unless you're probably... Uh, you made your remark. Have you people found the contract between...
This is the only contract I've got.
That's one of the issues.
Yeah.
Okay. See, that's really between us and the school, and between us and Scottsburg. It's not between me and you. We haven't found it.
We own the tower. We leased from you the ground.
Okay. Well, I read through some stuff that, uh, from a tower company that made me think that maybe you guys were leasing that up.
Yeah. If it was bought, I forget the cost on it. Wasn't that much back then.
Okay. Well, we went up there last spring, something for my guys, and we cleared around the fence area a little bit and inside the fence area a little bit. And, uh, you know, then Scottsburg supposedly had removed their stuff. There's still some wires down, but I'm really not sure whose wires they are.
Probably Scottsburg's, to be honest with you.
Well, I thought so. They keep squirting down, they took everything off upstairs.
Well, they dropped, uh, something down through the roof. We had to fix it.
I've heard that story.
We got a big, I got a picture of a gash in the roof when they took theirs down. In my understanding, we're the one one that's using it right now. Uh, I don't think anybody else is. In fact, I know nobody else is on there but us.
The schools, by the way.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't know whether, whether, I don't know where they were.
Well, as far as I know, they won't, they won't, and you guys ain't thinking it would be anything, so to say, uh, uh, they don't have to build it.
So just to clarify, we need to send a letter to the joint property owner that has the tree that states he is responsible in the event that the tree falls on the guide wires?
Well, the, the commissioners don't have any property rights to that property. So the commissioners have an easement, which is just, um, a legal access to, for the radio tower. The property owner, if, if you're concerned about, um, that tree, then the property owner can contact-
I see.
-the owner of the tree if it's posing a risk of imminent harm or, or damage. Uh, that's between you and the other property. But as of right now, the commissioners, uh, have a legal easement, which is just access.
Access to, but we don't have the waters, that's for sure. It's up to Mr. Cotton Gin.
But we own the tower and if the tree falls on the guide wires, it's going on our insurance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a tough situation.
The damage would, we'd have to counter sue him.
So we're just dead in the water.
So you do have an easement over on that property?
Yeah, with you.
Okay.
It's, it's not that much. It's, uh, uh, beginning at north, northwest corner of the southeast corner and south east fence, north ninety degrees east along the north line, second quarter, six hundred feet. That's the driveway up to it.
That's the driveway up. There's a five or six hundred foot, a thirty foot road up there, and then a hundred foot square. And that's blocked, not getting parked.
Right. And that's yours. And everything else around. We're just having access to that.
Eighty degrees around it's by little roads.
Jason, do you know, are we rocking that?
No, we did last year.
Okay.
I know, I know my brother grew a grade up there, maybe more than twice on the county highway, but, oh, I think we put maybe a little rock or two on, but I don't know.
I know, I know at one time, when we was out there back twenty years ago, uh, they had to get the grade director to grade it because it was some ruts. And I think the county did put rock on it, and I didn't know if we maintained it or not.
We, we don't have access to the gate, you know. If somebody needs something, then we'll go take care of it. I, so let's talk about that. I've been there nineteen years. I can remember a few times that everything's gone.
Okay.
I know last spring or summer, we took, there, took some rock up there, graded it, got it, made a spot there where the water wouldn't just run down the road, it would get over more to the side. Uh, keep it accessible.
So at, at the end of the day, if, if, I'm not advising you, but if you have insurance company or an attorney, you can ask them what your options are for that tree. If the, if the commissioners own that property, my advice would be, we would reach out to that property owner, um, depending on what threat of risk it posed to the, uh, property. And then we'd go from there. So, you know, you, you have some options, but, um, obviously I can't advise you, but if you have an attorney or insurance company, you may wanna reach out to them to see, depending on the status of that tree. And if it was dead, dying, you know, I, my advice didn't be different than if it was a dying healthy tree.
Right. It'd be in the best interest of all parties for it to be gone.
Yep.
Yep.
It could get smogged out of it, if that makes you feel.
Most popular trees were split in. We both know what's gonna happen eventually to a poplar.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a new tree, it's a, my little brother didn't act like he was too determined. He said, "They're gonna want that." I said, "Okay, whatever." I said, you know, "I need to be finding somebody else to do it, you know, so be it. It'll take somebody with some, her equipment to get it down."
Oh.
So does that answer your question?
Well, I, I guess I'm impressed that you do have easement because I didn't think you did.
Well, my, radio tower easement, and it was back in two thousand.
Right. And I don't remember who the guy lived, he lived a good while and then this other guy spoke that part. Okay.
The main thing is to get it taken care of before it actually, it does happen. And too many people aren't relying on nine-one-one top.
Yeah.
And if it's me and you, we wanna really don't hurt you.
I agree.
Anything else, Terry?
Not on my part.
Thanks very much for coming in.
Yes, the updates on the three things that we had joint interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department.
Morning.
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 I don't have much. Um, obviously Friday, Friday afternoon, it was a little snow, go through one to three inches, depending on where you're in county. I had a full call out about around seven-thirty Friday night and we covered all, all the routes, both lanes, put the peril down, filed snow all. And we were talking out at two a.m. Saturday morning. So, never got any follow-up calls, no concerns. Uh, the reason I did that is because I figured Saturday morning, we got six o'clock, we got out, everything had been frozen solid, which my drive was frozen solid Saturday morning when I got it.
Yeah.
So I think we hit it right, right at the right time. We've already restocked our next building, got forty more tons of salt coming today, three innings at max capacity, ready to go for next round. Hopefully, we don't have an extra round, but-
Next weekend.
We're, we're ready. So, um, still putting cullards in. Second district's been finding some real cullards and things that have been neglected for several years, several, several years. And, uh, just put a couple orders for several large cullards. So, they're, they're staying busy every day, patch holes and stuff like that. It's about like that, so.
Jason?
No, I didn't make a statement, they did a good job on the road down the mowers.
Yep. I think they had a marshmallow, little marshmallow. Rick sent me a picture at five or five-thirty from his house and everything's covered. I looked at my house and the blacktop and the grass is still showing. So-
See, I told you.
Well, I doubt it.
Yeah.
I didn't get anything.
Yeah. Uh, Rick, Rick's got a picture, legs are hard and it was just a pulley come. So, the one he come in, seven thirty, he was like, he said, "There's two tracks and they've already had a blacktop." But I was lucky to step off the road because Saturday morning, get a bit of nightmare, I think, I didn't put any problems. So, but Tiffany was in the office the entire night until twelve-thirty, never had one call up. So, I thought that was a success for us. We're ready to go for round two, three or four. We're ready.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Fine, gentlemen, thank you.
April?
Thank you.
Karen?
Good.
Rick?
No, sir.
Next statement?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. More or less, you got more than you said, living right.
I've still got snow.
Yeah. It's not on this.
On this side of my house, I've still got snow.
How you do?
Chris, you're after?
At the end, twenty-six.